Just trying to get on there. Hi.
Hey, Helen.
Any second. I'm trying to get it on the stream. Yeah, I'm sorry. Sixty-four is the third way one. I don't fix it. It's just to get it out. I fix it. Yeah. I deleted it out. I don't know where I put them. No, no. I put the other one. I think I just put it down on the table. Alright.
Okay, welcome everyone to the Monday July 15th of local council for talk in front of regular meeting. For the record, although been preceded by President Mr. Voney, Mr. Fady, Mr. Farrell, County, Mr. Clark, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Che, Mr. Donnie, Mr. Bow, Mr. Bowing, and Mr. Ryan, along with staff, excuse me, County President Ellis, Staff, Cliff, Mr. Turner, Mr. County Director Charo, and our president's councilor. Alright, so all right, to the agenda, specifically the Sunday meeting for tonight, so for managers and representatives meeting, looking forward to July 8th, we're pretty much seeing members. Okay, next, under consideration of local laws, we had votes for that was definitely in vote by Miss Fady, who has close contact, so that's not going to be considered as a duty of local laws. No.
Go, go, go.
Okay, okay, I mean, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, local law P.
So.
You got my word for me.
So, there.
Yeah. Local law, and right now they're on this.
No, they're not. They're not. Don't worry, it's a good question, that's a good answer.
Yeah. Can you put some problems? Yeah, I would be surprised.
Problem. Okay.
Alright, just about ready for that. This is all right? This is all right? Okay, back. Under local law, we're gonna have a local law P, which we want to look at as our third representative. We're adding local law P, the better. This is. Who did give this to them? Okay, alright, I'll do the best I can. Alright, so local law P, we're adding, that's true, that's it. Next on to local law, local law, several local law. C, this, Mr. Che, do you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Che, I'm sorry, I'm correct. So first, I feel like you're not coming on all of this, so I'm just going to play them. But also, because I think this is a little frustrating, people don't have vacation, they're not vacation. I have suggested that we put off a local law C for date certain, September 9th, when you expect to have vacations. After London Bridge Council raised a concern about the effect for Edinburgh's White Strikethood Law Act and may be voting out committee and then approve the local law for September 9th. I reached out to Mr. Kennedy and asked if he would agree to not put local law in on carbo, but that part of the law is on September 9th. And here, he was unwilling to commit to doing that, so the question I raise for council members is whether I can get a commitment from the body to put off the local law C until we have a local law C on September 9th. That may provide everybody that they can notice when it's actually come up for a while, rather than viewing it on a meeting by meeting basis. I thought it was a reasonable proposal, especially being that local law C was held twice, and there was a full complement of council members ready to vote on it. And that's the letting of voting on it, or pushing it into a separate direction on it. So, wondering if I'd, you know, if I'd love to bounce away, we're going to put local law C off our vote in date certain, September 9th. But only if there is general agreement that we're not voting on local law and.
This is a fight, if I agree to pass the bulk taking, we just need to go to the end, we try to get out of the meeting, not waiting until September, have something I can do, but prior to that, and then waiting until after, the local law seems to be on, we, uh, local law, that's a fight.
So I started with, I'm not, I'm just not very able to say, if I understand what you're saying, is if we're not voting on local law until that September 9th.
That is correct.
Alright, and I'm good with that, and I'm sure that's very good. And so, tonight I'd like to announce that local law C will be put up for a vote in date certain, on September 9th. I am fearful that maybe it's possible, and it's a full complement step back, but I'm seeing the kind of vote on that place in the bar.
Local law C is still down. Uh, next, uh, local law F, the council, uh, more represented, before the man. Uh, yeah. Not certain, I'm like, just making that up.
Thank you so much for being so fast, like, uh, to go on to end or live with the campaign and how. So voting on Local Law Act, uh, eight, six, come out today, makes the whole amendment statute come out today, uh, I think two weeks ago, and allow the eight and well passed by the Local Law Act. Uh, some political amendments for that, but if, uh, and to, uh, medical, testing, and those, uh, amendments, several amendments, uh, we're going to be introducing Local Law Act that has those amendments, uh, for the second amendment, pardon, to be allowed eight and well passed by the Local Law Act. It also needs to include more time on par, too, if there's any additional, uh, needing to let the rules, but the call of bill, the country does the bill, uh, in this Local Law Act, uh, to add to the eight, the non-tribal, the eight's property, and then it's going to all the votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
May I add, I asked the president.
Yes, ma'am.
So if I understand it, um, what he has to provide today is not Local Law Act, is not necessarily final agreement in terms of what how Local Law Act will be amended in this week.
I'm hoping that the change of the Local Law Act, uh, it was like, uh, the nine and a half, I hope to that, um, goal is to give the administration, basically, to strengthen the ability to ask while making sure that the informed state bill, this kind of, um, and allowing clouds, if it's only in the process of the bill, in four quarters.
Okay. I'll figure out a solution. If the mayor, he knows Local Law Act, what would he have?
Uh, if the mayor feels Local Law Act, uh, you know, we're going to bring that up for people, please, that can happen. Uh, I was very much happy, uh, following the council as part of practice while we did go through these amendments, uh, and, uh, I have confidence that, uh, we have a change in rules and other than that.
Okay. All right, next on the Local Law Act, will be voting for Local Law Act, twenty one times. Six of Local Laws and on to the forty, two hundred and thirty two. We'll have forty, twenty one, seven, two, ten one, and this law, uh, that will be the first to find me. Next on the resolution.
Always, always go. Twenty two, seventy, seventy seven.
Uh, the second, uh, second order to be, uh, twenty two, seventy, two, twenty one times, so that would be for the one. One, two, uh, two hundred and thirty two. So that's what should be fifty nine, sixty seven, two, uh, this law. Uh, we'll see voting on that. And after that, uh, resolution sixty seven, two, twenty one arm, President Johnson, we'll vote on that also. These were all protests.
Eli. I'll tell you a response to that one.
Uh, resolution, yes, uh, resolution sixty seven, two. For the state from the South, in Washington, okay, all right. So this, uh, President Johnson and this President. To that, and these are all part of the CFA process, uh, performing, uh, seventy four times. Next, resolution sixty one, seven, two, twenty one arm, uh, by Miss Farrell, uh, she's changed to President, we'll vote on that also. Uh, next, resolution sixty.
On the second, I just want to know for sixty one, on the, the third and last there has, the amount is two million dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Next, uh, resolution, by this law, sixty two, seven, two, twenty one arm, uh, first, a resolution to the funding, uh, the local station, contract, that will be voted on that also. Uh, this is sixty two, seven, two, twenty one. Next, resolution, uh, this phase, sixty three, seven, two, twenty one arm, uh, for the department, uh, project, uh, will be voted on that. And next, we got, uh, two resolutions, granted by the majority of the Senate, a resolution sixty four, uh, seventy one, uh, division to the, uh, free authority, and a resolution sixty five, seventy two, twenty one arm, uh, division to the fourth, to support the four people. So, so we may now have thirty two percent. And then, at this time, that's eight, four. So, please, I, 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 uh, I'm just talking about cigarettes, I take a position on, on this issue. If one's in Congress, they can take any position on these, who, who are.
I actually, I don't know if they have or have, I haven't looked at all the numbers, which I'm not sure. Um, I know that, uh, a lot of members have passed, but I'm not sure specifically our state representative have or haven't. I'm certainly something that will share with us. Um, I think that if it comes really often, maybe it's taken on how much of the municipal dollars we spend, um, on things that we're going to, that's right, we're wasting in the night, so, certainly share with us.
Uh, yeah, I'll see on the most, but I feel that's concerning. As many people know about the last report, WCT living and WCT rights, it's, uh, you know, we think about free speech, and particularly, uh, the role of the common council to have, uh, except like to say, what they're interested in, what they're interested in, uh, it's a little bit nice, especially where we know here in the city of Albany, uh, unemployment in certain neighborhoods is as high as twenty two percent. So, uh, you know, I'm really concerned, uh, what type of message we're sending to other businesses. I mean, you go along, uh, several businesses have, uh, that free speech concerns, what do you look at that? I'm sorry.
Uh, I would just add, and I apologize to whoever are on my phone. I don't think my dynamic works. Um, but, so I firmly believe in the, in the person of rights and freedom of speech. People can support whatever they want, businesses can too. With that, the issue is whether we make the choice to have a company that puts their funding to violate what we in New York have considered basic human rights, if we give them public space and public dollars. So that's the, that's for me, the simplified issue of this. I completely believe in person and rights. I think they are so vital, and I do particularly can give their money wherever they choose. My issue is that they should not be on public land and doing that. I wish we'd be giving them public dollars to do that.
Um, just again, my, my concern is, uh, the local, uh, city government, particularly in our city, we're looking, we've been voting on the issue of tenure gas, on black and brown people, uh, tenure gas in our city. We are dragging our feet to even vote on that, you know, and let's go forward. We talked about openings flat, we're still talking about that, but some of it.
Okay, you know, this is.
I just have to be really cautious about the message that we sent to businesses when we had, uh, several communities where unemployment is as high as twenty two percent. I mean, we have failed to delete the statute in front of this city. Uh, that's another discussion, but they said if you want to talk about something that is twenty three, sixty to a hundred miles away, to say that they don't have a right to open up this, I think that we have to look at other corporations. We might have to say, so our local community, because their CEO has made some comments, we say Amazon shouldn't come here, I mean, greatness in there. And I think that we have to be really cautious about the message that we're sending to our, our businesses, who want to set a shop. It's already bad enough that there's no jobs in the city of Albany, there are also jobs in public jobs, which had the nature of jobs, which have dragged our people from flourishing this city to the end, and now we want to say our private corporation is saying, you know, we can't come here, there's a, a common, uh, common, so I'm saying that we need to be really cautious about some of these resolutions, the message that we're sending.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farrell. Uh, Mr. Connor, would you do that, talk to the, or, 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 like, you?
Yeah, I know, I know. Um, I have a quick one now, first, my, my name is actually supposed to be second on this thing. So I do support your resolution, um, and I do not support a resolution that is related to our practices, uh, voting, uh, private property in the city of Albany, since this said, the county saying on Madison Avenue, uh, we, I'm going to say something like that. The issue here is the use of public property, and it's good stewards of public property that use reflects our values. Uh, naturally, it's prosperous resolution, uh, and naturally, you should check the way you're not in a direct contract with, or if there's already a subcontract with the local company that is settling various benefits for a, for a, but the issue is the use of public property, uh, and should that use reflect our values, uh, that we espouse in terms of all the laws and etc., uh, in the methods of the resolution is about. Um, if we're liking that, just for, uh, property, totally different issue than I have against the resolution like that, uh, in regards to that definition.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Governor, Mr. Farrell.
Uh, to me, this is the same issue that, um, when I was on school board and in the high school, though, uh, just saying that we have people from the city of Albany as part of our construction team. When we have municipal dollars and municipal space, we should have, um, it's just a different thing. I think that there are few, uh, businesses that come into the city that are, who can either rock the city especially now. Uh, this is not about businesses across the city, this is about public spaces, publicly owned spaces and public dollars, and why, where we want to do that.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, have comments on the resolution, how's that for the votes next?
All the board, all the public council meeting, Monday, July nineteenth, and one, uh, one supports, please call.
Councilmember None.
President.
Councilmember Valley.
Here.
Councilmember Natty.
President.
Councilmember Sett.
President.
Councilmember Beatty.
Here.
Councilmember Farrell.
Here.
Councilmember Flan.
Here.
Councilmember Brendan.
Here.
Councilmember Holy.
Here.
Councilmember, Councilmember Ayo.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Pro.
Here.
Councilmember Love.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Rappson.
Fourteen thousand, in an accent.
Thank you. Now, when you stand, you need to, you need to pledge allegiance to our government. Now, when you stand, you need to, you need to pledge allegiance to our government. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty, and justice for all. Now, we move on to our next part of our agenda, which is our public comment period. Due to the number of numbers that people signed up, uh, each public comment, first, we're all going to speak in three minutes, that way we can see here a number of people who are not able to speak tonight, but if you have a number of public comment period, it's only one hour. Uh, and so that way, if you're with someone, you're going to say the exact same thing you're going to say on the last admission, you might want to pass it, have someone else find a speaker and make shoes, but if you don't, uh, that's fine as well. When you call to public comment, please state your name and address from the record. Uh, please address me as the chairman, as the president. Do not address any council members. The public comment period, council members cannot answer any questions, so do not address any questions, captain. Uh, the president, uh, council member's name, later on in the agenda, and choose to, uh, speak upon the issue that is visible that we come to public comment to talk about. Uh, so with that being said, also, uh, for the public comment period, you do have, you know, you want to make sure there's no disverged records, so no chairman, or anything like that, so people, so we can get, get that to talk about this, we can move on. Uh, with that being said, if a clerk, please call, and in two minutes, after two minutes, I'll tell them you have one hand left remaining. See, with that being said, if a clerk, please call first.
Samantha Harris. Connor Gillis.
Good evening, Connor Gillis, two seventy, not standing, uh, off the floor. Um, good evening, Council President, Members of the Common Council, my name is Connor Gillis, I am the Board of Directors Director of the Greater Capital Association of Realtors, speaking to I have the Jeep Cars, thirty seven hundred members, and positions of Local Law Act. Two thousand nineteen, New York passed the Housing Stability and Tenant Protection Act, which significantly overhauled the state's rental laws, offering strong protections for tenants, limiting the, limiting landlord's ability to increase rents and prevent delinquent tenants. Among other things, HSCKA requires landlords to notify tenants if a lease will not be renewed or for rent to be increased five percent or greater, and permits courts to stay the issuance of a warrant to break the tenant for up to one year if the tenant shows substantial hardship in fighting for accommodations. If New York already has some of the strongest tenant protections in the country, what is the need to add additional regulations on top of that? As currently written, Local Law Act for two thousand twenty one will limit evictions and offering impivate rent increases of more than five percent. This may sound positive to tenants, but housing is a system of many elements that impact many people, renters, landlords, property owners, professionals who work in city, in the city and business owner, all who play a part in the city's economy. Instead of helping tenants, this proposal stands to reduce the affordable housing cost in the city by driving landlords out and disincentivizing investment in the remaining properties. Such a massive success will only add to the struggles of those that propose law needs to help, as well as those who would taste a wrecking event, a rental industry that has been hammered by the pandemic. Specifically, the provision of Local Law Act that is most concerning deals with non-renewed leases. According to this proposal, if a landlord has an expired lease and is not wishing to renew it, that should ease their right, the tenant would now have the ability to stay in that union by signature of the lease. Landlord would then have to report to brick that tenant, even though the contract they both legally entered has ended. As currently written, Local Law Act, it is a liability landlords operate their business, and while they drive them out of the city, will force them to seek ways to drive laws, both of which will have a definite debt.
That will make it a fact. Not only on tenants, it means to protect them, but also the city of Albany. It is our hope that the council will hear the serious concerns involving these housing providers and work to reconcile Local Law Act, to ensure workable fairness in legislation for everyone who lives, for everyone who lives and works in the city of Albany. Thank you. Many good. And the clerk, please, give us.
Jeff Pyne.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Common Council, here I am also opposed to Local Law Act. Uh, I spoke a couple of weeks ago, I also believe that the way this being presented, excuse me, the way it's being presented today is questionable, that affects for the fact of the way that are being changed is done as we speak, have not been presented to the public, has not been written clearly, it has to be presented in a full manner, which is most promoted on White Common Council. I also question the fact that the way this control of rent control is also in opposition to your state law, and must be in a legislative approval. At the latest meeting, I discussed the fact of the five percent increase. The increase in costs in the past year have been well over twenty five percent to wrong businesses. You can look at your grocery store, you can look at just every item that's purchased today, but you want to strip a landlord to a five percent increase, but you have a grocery store that raises the price of cucumbers, eggs, milk, by whatever they choose. They can also choose who may or may not enter their store. If a shoplifter comes to their store and the door's not as mentioned, they have to force it escorted out because they don't want to lose their goods for free. A landlord should have the right to basically contractual obligations in law to pick and choose on whether or not a lease should be renewed, and whether or not the resident is happy there, or other residents that live in the same building and community. As well as, in the court system, ninety eight point seven percent of evictions, which I'm sure is going to be brought out tonight, are due to non-payments. Ninety eight point seven percent are due to non-payments. The other ones are due to whether there's conflict between the resident and the landlord, which can be ironed out and is ironed out in the court of law through the judicial process of court trial. I believe it is in the best interest for this to be pulled back, reconsidered, brought back into public comment, and to be presented again at a much better time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And clerk, please call in here.
Paul Nichols.
Good evening, my name is Paul Nichols, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'm a former homeowner and renter in the city of Albany, my business owns and manages a hundred eighteen units in the city.
Did you get with that, sir?
Uh, my, I'm sorry, I didn't raise the mic. With respect to the five percent limitation on rental increases, I would like to point to the following. First, I would ask, where did the five percent limitation come from? Where is the empirical data to support this number? Is there some analytical calculation, or is it merely arbitrary? In my opinion, I do not believe the commission is properly taking into consideration operating expenses when it comes to the five percent. If they had done so, they would have discovered that this year, council meeting, missing their cable and internet expenses increased by six percent, insurance expenses increased by eight percent, and payroll increased by ninety percent. How can you possibly limit a private company's ability to cover contractual increases in operating expenses with what's effectively rent control? When that operating income, which is the difference between rental and operating expenses, turns downward, you not only reduce cash flow, but you also reach value for properties as well. The last meeting, one of the council members indicated that they believe housing is a human right. All of us agree with that statement one hundred percent. That is why we would put our money or our mouth on it by investing hundreds of thousands of dollars in the city, and we further guarantee hundreds of thousands of dollars in debt. To put this burden on landlords who are already absorbing the Housing Stability and Tenure Protection Act of two thousand nineteen, and the devastation of COVID nineteen whereby many tenants have not paid rent is outrageous. The Housing Stability Act already says landlords need to provide tenants thirty to not pay his notice if a landlord intends to increase rent above five percent. I would ask, why is this existing law not, as a study been done to see if the two thousand nineteen law addresses the concerns you see overall? With respect to the non-renewal of a lease, I would first point out that it is disingenuous that the commission seeks to make it nearly impossible for a landlord to non-renew a lease. The wordplay we keep hearing is that it cannot affect a tenant when that lease is up except for good cause. Choosing to, uh, non-renew a lease is not eviction, to the contrary, it's called a holdover, a holdover on the part of the tenant. Non-renewal lease was, again, a. Non-renewal of lease was, again, already addressed in the 2019 Housing Stability Law, providing a 25% increase. Second, you act as landlords who never, or rather, want to evict every tenant they have and look to own vacant buildings. Nothing can be further from the truth. I'm sure if you ask every landlord in the city, they love nothing more than a building managed 100% occupied by paying individuals who treat the property and their neighbors with dignity and respect. Why should a landlord not be allowed access to a lease in which two consenting adults are in it? When a car leases up, you turn the car around. Everybody knows the rules, you can't just keep driving the car. Any rational adult understands that the lease has a start date and an end date, which in fact is the very definition of a supermario website. They're effectively trying to change the very definition of the word lease. The last thing I would like people to think about is the very people you are looking to help. If you simply enforce the laws, party on the books, you respect code enforcement, and you firmly embrace the 2019 Housing Stability Laws, 90% of the problems will be being fixed from the beginning themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. If a clerk would call next speaker.
Good evening, President Ellis. Thank you. As a third-generation Albanian who does own property in the city of Albany, I oppose the local law F, as I believe it has a negative impact on tenants and will result in less purple housing available. Nobody wants to see a tenant not protected. However, let's not forget that tenants in New York already benefit from the strongest eviction protection in the country. Instead of protecting tenants, this law will end up hurting tenants because this bill will limit what landlords can set the rent set. Small business owners, mom and pops will have less incentives to invest. Can you imagine if a landlord needs to take the profit off rentalism to put in a kitchen, or fix a leaking hot water heater, or oiler? If they can't afford to do it since rents are restricted, you may end up with more foreclosures and more boarded-up leases than city dwellers. And worse, why would anyone invest in a city that doesn't support the rights of people to determine how much they need to pay their mortgages to fix up their own properties? Many of these landlords are mom and pop operations. Many of them already work with their tenants. This is not New York City. We do not need these oppressive prescriptions in addition to what we have to protect tenants. We will end up with more broken-down buildings not that's delivered. What is the purpose of this law? Is this to provide additional housing for the city of Albany? Across America, laws like this have silenced the building of housing for low and medium-income tenants. If you really want to do something, let's go on to the national level. Let's continue this discussion, but this is not the law that will do this. This is misdirected legislation. For these reasons and more, I ask that we reconsider the local law F of 2021. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you. If a clerk would call next speaker.
Deborah Cruz, who's a board, or who's a mayor? Good evening, President Ellis, members of the common council. Thank you so very much for your time, I appreciate it. My name is Debbie Poussey-Jean, I'm a property owner at now the Albany area, I've been here since 1997. I'm here opposing local law F because it is truly unconstitutional law. You've heard so many arguments against good cause eviction, which are all very valid. However, the strongest argument against good cause eviction, this law, is that it is unconstitutional. As I shared in writing with the committee, as well as sharing in an email with the entire common council, 128, Article 1, Section 10 of the United States Constitution clearly states that no state shall pass any bill entailing ex post facto law or law impairing the obligation of contracts. Again, no state shall pass any bill entailing ex post facto law or law impairing the obligation of contracts. There are no exceptions to this anywhere else in the Constitution. The landlord-tenant relationship is a contractual relationship. Therefore, this bill is unconstitutional. The Constitution does not state that its words can be twisted, manipulated, or reinterpreted to fit a narrative. This was done by design to protect and uphold all people's constitutional, not given rights. The Constitution also states that we, the people, are mandated to ensure the power given to elected officials is not used, and that the Constitution is followed. You all took it home when you were sworn in to uphold the Constitution and protect the rights of all people, not just of select few. If you vote yes for this bill, you are implicitly now responsible for stripping we, the people, of our constitutional rights. I urge you to vote no, which will keep the tech, every man and woman's constitutional, not given rights. The Constitution is the law of this land, and it must be followed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. If a clerk would call next speaker.
Hassan Harris, Wilcher.
Hello. My name is Hassan Harris Wilcher. Uh, I was born and raised in Albany. Uh, all my family is from the city, but I was only in the local city. Uh, so I come here today. Yeah, I come here today in support of good cause.
Does it need your address for the where, sir?
Yes, absolutely. Uh, so living here in Albany.
Are you going to state your address for the where, sir?
Oh, address, yeah. Um, so I live, I live at 15th Harmony Hill Road, 7th Avenue. Uh, but when I was living here in the city of Albany correctly, I was living at 63 South Fair East Street, Part 1, and 54 Park Street.
Okay.
Um, so being more raised here in the city of Albany, I lived through the all of this, because I've been born and raised here and grew up here. And in that first apartment I mentioned, Park Avenue, uh, I was, we were at school about because the landlord wanted to move in with her boyfriend at the time. So we had fun, we split. Um, so we moved not too far away, uh, to South Fair East Street, across from Old U M B. And we lived, we lived in apartments where I lived in the new addition of the apartment, where water routine flooded right on top of my bed. So you can picture a bubble above my head on the ceiling. Every, every time it would rain heavily, that's what would happen. And my bed would get flooded, and I would have to shift over, uh, move some of my things, uh, to the water damage. This is some of the conditions that Albany, I've been living in. And I had just started high school, and my mom was a single parent, and was raising a kid on her own. And that sort of stress is the reason why it occurred because we want to hold landlords accountable, and we want to hold tenants accountable. So we want to make sure that there's good cause for violations in that contract that I mentioned earlier. But we want it to be equitable and fair. We want to have good conditions to raise our children and the people who live in Albany, who support this whole city, the system that we uphold, the taxes, the revenues. So we want the children to grow up in good condition. We want the people to live in good condition. So we want good landlords to create good outcomes.
And for the benefit of.
So I'm asking to support people, yes, on this end. Because I want, I want to grow up in a city and support a city that supports the people. And I want to make sure that children growing up in Albany don't have to be subject to water flooding on a daily basis. I want people to grow up where they can feel secure, happy, and ready to contribute to this city that we call our home. Thank you.
Thank you. If a clerk would call next speaker.
Beth Zedford.
Hi, good evening, Mr. President, city council members. My name is Beth Zedford. My address is 203 St. Morris Street, Albany. Uh, I'm so grateful to have your ears tonight. Uh, I am the daughter of two longtime Albany tenants. Uh, I am also a tenant myself in cities like Baltimore and Montreal. I've lived in, as a tenant, the reason I've grown up in those other places is because it's relevant. Um, to make the choice to pass the Good Cause Eviction Bill may have a huge impact here on Albany renters, but you also have the opportunity to set a precedent for this entire nation. And not because the issue at the heart of this bill is not Albany's specific issue. This bill addresses what I would call a power imbalance between landlords and tenants that exists in this entire country. This bill would not prevent landlords from evicting a tenant if they have a just cause. This bill would not prevent landlords from being able to increase the price of rent in their building if they have a just cause. What this bill does is it limits and protects tenants, under-resourced tenants, against what I would call pitfalls, or trap doors even, that they can fall into when landlords make decisions that are not just cause, but are serving their personal interests. This bill would shift the responsibility of doing the right thing to landlords that have more resources. And it would also prevent tenants from having to look over their shoulder constantly for these pitfalls and confusions. And what I mean when I'm saying under-resourced tenant is probably more common than you think. You can tell by tonight that these landlords know what they're doing. It's their business to know these laws in and out. And for someone like me, even the daughter of two college-educated, longtime renters, I never looked at lease until I signed one myself. That's not uncommon, especially, it's not something we learn in school, how to stand up for ourselves or know tenants' rights in that way. And you might say, okay, look it up. But this city like Albany that suffers from systemic racism and other huge issues that, I mean, consider someone that doesn't have the reading level to be able to understand those codes. There are tenants all over the city in that situation. Or someone who doesn't have the high-speed internet access to look at lots that are changing all throughout COVID, to know what to do. The fact, thank you. The fact of the matter is that tenants, in general, as a group, are under-resourced compared to landlords. And this bill shifts the responsibility to people with more resources to do the right thing. This bill is a safety net that will address inequality that happens across this country. And any landlord who's doing the right thing by their tenants should have nothing to worry about.
Please note the caller, that's a way we can give it to the link out there. Thanks. Uh, who else here?
Catherine Kubetz, sir. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you, I'm jealous. I have myself a lucky tenant, and I'm a large history. I'm a responsible tenant, and I have five parents and I'm married to my entire 10 and a half years to Albany. But not all of us are as obvious as I am. And I feel that all tenants should be protected. And as a teacher, I see benefits and positive differences in students with secure housing and the field of community around them. All should have the sense of community and the opportunities that come with constant, consistent operating. Thank you.
Thank you. If a clerk would call next speaker.
Oh, sir, do you want to address?
Uh, yes.
I live in 289 Hudson Avenue.
Thank you.
Mark McShur.
Good evening, President Ellis, and good evening, members of the council. Um, I was originally intending, again, to talk with you all about the Tier Desk Act. Um, and just in case, to make sure you don't have any questions about my position on that, I urge you all to vote in favor of the full Tier Desk Act at the earliest opportunity, which I guess will be September, and I look forward to that great day. And it is really related to the Good Cause bill that I want to talk about. Albany has the opportunity, in many ways, on many different missions, to take the lead, to show not only the people of the city of Albany, people in surrounding towns and cities, the whole state of New York, and indeed the country, what it means to have an progressive city that cares about the human rights of its residents. And that's a city that I believe in, that I hope exists in Albany, and that in my 40 years of living here, too often it's been clear that human rights are not respected, whether we're talking about issues of resolutality and lack of accountability, or in instances of tenants and landlords, the rights of people to safe, habitable, secure living conditions. And in my, I've come to this decision because, both as an attorney, who has represented tenants many times over the years in this, in the courts, in Albany State Court, but also as someone who is deeply involved on the state level in regard to housing policy, due to my work in the state legislature. And what I can say is that, not only do the people of Albany, including myself, and all of my friends and neighbors who are here today, need the protections that would be afforded by this Good Cause bill, but Albany, again, has the opportunity, and really the responsibility, to take the lead and to show others what it means to care, to recognize the imbalances that exist, and to try to even the field so that our friends and neighbors who live in Albany will be protected, will have safe housing, and will know that they will not be able to be evicted or to lose their house arbitrarily or without good cause. So I strongly urge you to support this bill. I think it's a wonderful bill. It will help people here, and it will send a message to others as to what it means to really care about the rights of people.
Thank you. If a clerk would call next speaker.
Mary Panzetta.
Good evening, President Ellis and members of the council. My name is Dr. Mary Panzetta. I reside at 293 South Main Avenue, Ward 9. I am speaking in favor of passing the resolution, co-sponsored by council member Doche. Urging Senators Schumer and Joe Biden to pass S1, the For the People Act, which would strengthen and protect voter rights. S1 is widely supported by a majority of Americans, Democrats, Republicans, and independents. It is truly bipartisan. Nothing is more important than defending our democracy. Albany needs to pass this resolution, and in so doing, let, set the example for the other towns and cities in New York to do the same. Senators Schumer and Joe Biden need to hear from one New York state voice. In order to get this bill passed through Congress, we must show that these important national issues have vocal support. Resolutions in support of the For the People Act are being introduced all over the state and have already passed in Kingston and Newt Falls, to name a few. Albany must lead, obviously, as the New York state capital, and demonstrate that no matter our race, background, or zip code, we believe for our democracy to work for all of us, it must include all of us. Thank you. I also stand with my fellow Albanians in support of the Good Cause bill.
Who needs to speak? Can the floor be called next speaker?
Anne Early.
I'm Anne Early from 242 41th Avenue. And I'm also here to speak in support of the For the People Act resolutions, 5721R. Across the country, communities and businesses are issuing resolutions like this to send a message of broad-based popular support for the For the People Act in an effort to push this legislation over the finish line in Congress. The For the People Act has been a royal partisan battling. What it comes for is common sense. Why should it be so difficult to get registered to vote and actually vote in America? S1, For the People Act fixes that. Why should voter voices be diluted by a jury-mandated discourse in America? S1 fixes that. Why should corporations and wealthy donors be able to flood the airwaves with advertisements and fund campaigns without the public knowing what's behind those dollars? S1 fixes that. Why should it be so difficult for people who aren't wealthy to mount effective federal campaigns, given the high cost of running campaigns? S1 fixes that too. We need these things fixed because we have significant other things that also need to be fixed. Most importantly for me, the climate crisis. And the current setup and the holes money and interest crowd out and corrupt the will of people on this and so many other issues. Resolutions like the one we're going on tonight are in effort to let Congress know that there's broad-based popular support across the country for the fixes in the For the People Act, a way to show that states that we got their backs will be bold and passive. America shouldn't be a place where people's capacity to vote without answers depends on where you live. And it shouldn't be a place where money drives policy change. That's not the public interest. I sincerely ask for your vote in favor of this important resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Can the floor be called next speaker? Then it honors first woman in the table. Let me motion. Yes, let me motion to extend all the comments. The second to the motion.
Second.
Comment. All of the paper. Aye. Vote. Motion passed. For the Speaker, who wants to speak?
Tammy Coelho.
Hello, good evening, councilwoman and president. So I'm here today to testify in support of...
Say your name and address the question.
Sorry, no problem. My name is Tammy Coelho and I'm a 25-year-old. So I'm here today to testify in support of the Good Cause. I've been a resident in Albany since September and I came here to, in your internship. I'm trying to find a place to somebody who knows people who'd like to experience and live eviction. And just not just eviction, someone who knows it's like, you know, to just kind of have a house independently. And I would like to also add that some of the property owners are basically saying, you know, this isn't certain of their rights. But I'd like to say that as a property owner, you have the ability to determine whether someone has a place to sleep. I think that is a great power that you have. And also I think that there's been a lot of false information that started off with this bill actually do. I think that it's actually going to be all the more attractive to people, especially tenants. And I think it's also going to be very supportive for common local homeowners as well. I think essentially what this bill does is probably targets corporate relief in some senses. And I just think that it's something that would definitely help tenants, especially in the light of the worst scenes today. Housing is extremely important, but there's also a lot of just bad value holding. And I personally recently just experienced, I actually have a property owner who hired a magic company. And I don't, you know, the Good Cause is a tactic to like create some fear. But my lease was actually supposed to expire in September. So what they did was they put admission notes on my door, which I felt like was harassment. Especially when, you know, I've been blessed enough, you know, my parents have not, you know, missed a payment throughout this pandemic and I'm right, and I just felt like it was a harassment tactic that is being used in that and stuff like that. So it's happening. Yeah, so I just wanted to share my experience. Again, I'm losing from a young city. I know it's actually homeless. I know it's actually in a homeless shelter. And I think that this village is going to really help people, especially black people who are disproportionately impacted by elections. I don't think that it's fair for anyone to, you know, just be able to displace you. You know, I think that the law was supposed to actually be considered more attractive and that it actually improved housing and the city is advised one to live in this city. So yeah, I think that this is the right step to take.
Thank you. Can the floor be called next speaker?
Cory Jimmons. Great. Sean Louboutin. Crystal Lynn Mitchell. Matt Schmick. Tom Ullott. Jeanne Harrison. DeQuinda Jones. Peter Love.
Thank you, Chairman Ellis, for this opportunity to speak to the Council. My name is Reverend Peter Cook. I'm a homeowner at 413 Ledge Drive in Albany. I also serve as Executive Director of the New York State Council Churches, which works closely with advocates and property owners to enact just housing policies and further property restoration in communities in every part of the state of New York. And I'm also a former landlord. One of the things I find frustrating as a resident are that there are just too many poorly maintained metal properties all over the city in much greater proportion than other communities in New York. I'm also frustrated that people have to pay way too much for renting these properties. These two factors put my fellow residents in financial peril and cause them to have bad health, which puts them in more poverty while framing the social fabric of our communities. This kind of property and economic damage and its human cost devalues all of our properties, whether we are landlords or homeowners. Good cause eviction is one positive step we can take to encourage landlords to keep up their property and not cause economic instability to tenants and landlords by precipitously being able to evict people, especially if those residents complain about maintenance issues which make their grounds unhealthy or unlivable. To be sure, the law merely reinforces what good landlords who take care of their property, which is probably who is in this room today, and are already doing the right thing. This Good Cause eviction is not addressed to them. This is addressed to the landlords in our community who are not doing the right thing to keep up their property and in so doing negatively affect the value of both properties for homeowners and for landlords. Good cause also protects the property values of landlords and homeowners because people will be more inclined to buy in communities which are not so economically unstable or are saddled with life. So we strongly support Good Cause eviction. It's not the only thing that fixes our housing struggles here. There are other policies we can enact that will help that, but this is a good step for Albany. Thank you.
Can the floor be called next speaker?
Frederick Ploss.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Frederick Ploss. My address is 16 West Meadow Drive, Albany, 12203. I'm here to speak in support of Good Cause legislation. I think this is a step in the right direction. I think that I'm here because the housing is keeping right. I don't think that, again, having to look over your shoulder and worry whether or not you will be evicted from a place to sleep because of reasons, you mean, I understand, is standard that you can give to communities anywhere, Albany included. I think that everyone should have a right, especially in light of the humanitarian concerns of COVID-19 pandemic effects that we've had and have experienced as a country at home, and during the past year. I think that that alone should... We should look upon ourselves and think about what the right thing to do in light of all the effects of the Good Cause. I think that rent, rent prices have gone up, wages not enough to... to make this, to make this problem that... that can easily solve, that this is something that I know people who really do struggle with whether or not they're going to be able to afford where they can live. I don't think that's normal people...
Can the floor be made?
Thank you. Normal people struggle under the circumstances. I don't think that's a healthy community. I think that, as Stanley said, by the legs in the slot, it's a good place to start. And just like I said last night, thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to call next speaker?
Mary St. Samuel. Gabrielle Stilwell. April.
Hello. My name is Gabriel Soler. I'm at 99 South Academy. And I am here on behalf of nearly 300 tenants across Albany who have taken some sort of action. Most of them have sent emails from the Council, urging and begging that you pass the Good Cause actions. So this is a bill that is going to guarantee to people that housing is a human right. As some of the landlords here who vote this law have admitted themselves, it is a human right. And what other right do we leave to essentially the mercy of other people? None. We guarantee them in law, and that's what this law is trying to do. And it does, and this is not an anti-landlord bill. There's many good landlords, small landlords, who are here in support of this bill. And they support this bill because they realize that we have a pandemic of red exits across Albany now. Other landlords are saying that if you pass this bill, properties are going to go into disrepair. Well, look around. That's happening now. We have a situation where 100 tenants across Albany are living in dangerous, horrible conditions, and they can't be made innovative because they know that if they complain to their landlord, they're going to kick them out and replace them with somebody who isn't going to complain. That is why you end up with houses that continue to fall into disrepair year after year until they become condemned. With this law, landlords will actually have to take care of their properties and their tenants. And again, small landlords, landlords who care about their tenants, they are already doing this. This law will not impact them whatsoever. So they support this, especially because they understand that a community where its people are constantly housing insecure, where families are having to move from place to place, making, putting their jobs at risk, destabilizing their social networks with kids who are having to move to a different school because they're now living in a different school district and losing all of their friends. When you put all of that together, you put, you essentially have a community where there's more poverty, and you end up with more crime, and you end up with more gun violence. You end up with all the conditions that will drive businesses and the world being in trouble. Some members have also said that this is going to drive landlords out. Well, the truth is tenants are being driven out now. They're still the tenants who are actually leaving out because rents continue to increase so much more than their wages are increasing. So if we truly believe that housing is a human right, we wouldn't just chalk this up to normal inflation and say, well, it's just like cucumber. Cucumbers are going up, so we've got to have our house to go up too. No, people need this housing to survive, to continue to work, to continue to provide for their children. So we need to be tenement right and make sure that people are secure in their materiality. Now, like Marjorie Short said earlier, this is a unique opportunity for this council to either take the lead or fall behind the rest of New York that is currently passing similar legislation in other cities and statewide as well in the near future. So I need you to support the cause.
Thank you. Can the floor be called next speaker?
Lou Carrick.
Good evening, President Ellis and members of the Albany County Council. My name is Lou Carrick. I live across the river at 1601 Broadway in Metzowere. I do believe that the decision you'll make on the issue of Good Case eviction will happen not just in Albany, but on cities and counties around the state, which is why I need her to speak today. I'm a former homeowner. I'm aware of the challenge of maintaining property. A good homeowner anticipates the cost of maintenance, the cost of taxes, budgets, to anticipate cost increases in expenses, to anticipate firms breaking down, electricity going off, and budgets accordingly. A landlord has an opportunity and a responsibility. A landlord that rents such tenants has a greater opportunity, an opportunity to build wealth, but also a greater responsibility, a responsibility to the people and the families that now are dependent on that property for security, for housing. I am discouraged, but we do not do our best to encourage that responsibility of part of people who be allowed to build wealth in our communities. I currently rent because I am now retired. And after many years of nonprofit working, I have small savings to rely on to pay my rent. I apologize. I have two bedroom apartment and I've been there for seven years. Just about two years ago... Just about two years ago, my son and his fiance and their daughter came to me and said, with our medical debt, with our student debt, we can't afford housing in the capital region. We need to, and we're asking if we can come in with you in order to save money to do that. I talked with my landlord, who we've had a very good relationship with, and we agreed that they could stay there. I paid to renovate an attic room, so we had enough room in the house. And then about five months ago, they're planning to move out in another six months, my landlord increased my rent by 40%. I asked him, is this due to my family being, and he agreed about this? He said, well, I know that I can get this much for this apartment. And I said, is this rent going to stay when they leave? And he said, we'll talk about that later. So, there is an imbalance here. I keep my house, I maintain my house well, but there's a rug there that was supposed to be replaced when I moved in. Seven years later, it's still there, right? The opportunity to build wealth is not being matched by the responsibility to the people we rent to. And unfortunately, we have seen in the last 30 years, our elected people refrain from taking responsibility to regulate capitalism and regulate responsibilities that come along with wealth. It is not okay simply to maximize profits, with responsibility to the people who are in our communities, who live in our communities, to their health, to their safety, and that's what makes our communities vibrant.
Thank you.
To stay, to consider that, and to make a city Albany a place where that's true.
Thank you so much. The next speaker?
David Zoney. Alana White. Yvette Alfonso.
All right, well, that's not it. Good evening, everyone. Great to be here. Most of you know me as President of the Citizen Action of New York, because we've been anxious together, who have supported many causes together. But today, I'm here as a landlord. I can talk with experience that when you treat tenants well, they will take care of property. I have one tenant who's been in there in the apartment for 20-plus years. She's elderly, has two adult daughters living there, and a new tenant who was previously homeless. Both of them are, they're good tenants, and I will never say just arbitrarily throw them off, because frankly, I could get more rent, but I'm not going to do that. Somebody said that housing is a human right? It is. It is a right to be housed. It's one of those necessities that in all traffic. But in addition to that, it's important to have stability, to know, oh, by the way, and live back in what's for now, I can go watch. Let's get into that. And tenants should have stability. They should know that they are not going to be, you know, told one day, hey, get out, unless there's a process being dismissed or whatever. Now, I have to tell you, I have good intentions, you know, I'm a good person, you know, very bad at this. But at the same time, I'm looking at my property, and my property has increased in value. So, it's not totally selfless. It's to make, because I maintain a good property, I have tenants who appreciate what they're receiving, they help me keep the property going. So, by any chances, and by any chance, and now to talk about the law itself, if by any chance, any tenant will be disrupted or, I don't think, when your tenant is being obstructed, any tenants, there are provisions in the law to address that. It isn't asking if you have to keep someone who's going to tear up your apartment and is missing, which is the same otherwise. And I'll stop going back to the Constitution, which to me is very interesting, because that's the same Constitution that denied blacks' freedom, that denied blacks the right to property, that denied blacks to own their own values and to vote. And even after the Civil War, guess what? It took, surprisingly, it took people dying before that right was actually instituted. So, let's be careful how we quote the Constitution. So, I'm going to end there. Thank you for listening to me today. I'm hoping to keep working with you on this cause, on this local ordinance, and that we will support it. And just at the end, I also want to mention that I and Ashna Nusayshin, we support S1, the Forward Democracy Bill, that's hopefully making its way through to the Senate. I know all of you are very much interested in that because we want to ensure anybody has a right to vote and that anybody's rights of democracy is respected. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The next speaker?
Joanne Martin. Luigi Benaroff. Betty Ann Renter.
My name is Betty Ann Renter. I'm here at East 518 in the Melrose neighborhood, which is where my residence is. I'm a member of the Capital District Association of Renting Home Owners in New York. The proposed legislation is harmful to both tenants and landlords. I can hear the stories of terrible conditions and fears of complaining and being evicted. These units can't be used with residential occupancy permits, or they will be up your standard. And tenants should be advised that they do not owe rent if there is no ROV. As we pointed out before, because it is not to the benefit of the landlord to have to turn over an apartment, there will be no non-renewal without a reason, generally to do with other residents or property maintenance, and because a turnover generally means a loss of at least a month's rent to the landlord. Previously, a good tenant would get a non-renewal increase. Since the HSTPA of 2018, followed by a 15-month eviction moratorium, through which many, even working tenants chose to withdraw rent payments, landlords are being forced to reduce rents. The necessity of taking a tenant to court will be a very expensive proposition as well. By setting a max rent increase cap, by setting a standard four-year rent limit, for some reason, tenants cannot be evicted and have little or no security, and joyfully given license to destroy property which does not belong to them. This is not their case, but this has been approved of their eviction moratorium on a great scale. However, if tenants cannot be held accountable by non-renewal for their actions, landlords will have no choice but to seek the maximum increase each renewal in order to try to pay for or reserve for repairs.
The one remaining.
These requirements are being imposed without a year in which to allow landlords to acquire leases, providing for acceptable standards of behavior, perhaps regarding issues like smoking marijuana, noise, and inspections, although those provisions would be needed to claim rich covenants and eviction. In summer, the city has been negligent in ignoring folks who have set up business renting out without any knowledge or practice of arable requirements. Before imposing regulations which will increase costs on the landlords with ROVs, the City of Albany should finally set responsibility and identify the illegal units. All the stories about that unit should be referred to the legal codes. Upgrade those illegal units and then evaluate them in previous legislation.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker?
Charles O'Malley-Parker. Joe Capron.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning. My name is Joe Capron. I live at 835 Washington Avenue in New York. And I'm a coordinator with the New York State Poor People's Campaign. I think it's pretty obvious, though, the line has been drawn this evening based on the comments you've heard. And I've been at this advocacy organization for a while now, and every time I'm part of a campaign that is working for the rights of the poor and working class, our opponents, who always have way more wealth and way more property, say, you're just going to hurt the people you're trying to help. Every time they say that. And it's getting a little old because they're always wrong. And so, I think we heard the line here this evening. On one side, we've got families, we've got tenants, we've got people who are struggling to pay their bills to get by in the midst of a horrible pandemic. And on the other side, we've got property owners who own dozens, what, hundreds? I think someone mentioned how many properties that they have in the city, right? I would encourage you, if you've never been here, to rent housing for days on the morning. I know it's not early, it's hard to get in my socks sometimes. See who has lawyers and attorneys, right? Hear the stories of people who are getting cast out onto the street, right? Learn about the laws and things that, as many have mentioned, are already in place, but which tenants are deliberately, frankly, kept in the dark about, right? It's hard for tenants to know all their rights. They don't have the resources, as large landlords do, to have lobbying firms, advocate lawyers that are fighting for their property interests in the same way. So, I would encourage you, the line is clear, which side are you going to pick, right? The poor that is possessed in this city, the working class in this city who are struggling to understand that, or those who have property, who have wealth, who have attorneys in that regard? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have one more speaker. One more person. Please hold. Herb, please call that speaker.
Sandra Gonzalez. You've been President of this Common Council. I'm a resident and also landlord, I've been a manager of landlords for about 30 years, only worked for more than 30 years. So, I am well familiar with the type of people that rent property in this city. First of all, I live at 67 Eston Servo, and I'm here to speak in opposition to the good cause law. And I'm going to refer the council to the 30th apartment case, 117, Board of Trustees, the Village of Brooklyn versus Bureau, 15283, 149, page 155, is supported by position that this council does not have the authority to pass this law. And I'm going to quote from this case. Municipalities lack authority to adopt local laws that are consistent with the New York Constitution or any general law. A general law is meant from New York statute, passed by the New York Legislature. A local law is preempted when it conflicts with the provisions of a state statute or imposes prerequisite additional restrictions on rights under state law so as to inhibit the operation of states' general laws. The state legislature has already passed eviction laws, and this law is inconsistent with those laws, imposes additional restrictions on rights on the laws for both tenants and landlords. I'd also like to comment on some of the comments that were made tonight, that landlords hold the balance of power, and tenants have little power personally on the SHTPA, that landlords basically have no rights except to go to court and hopefully get a judgment, and maybe, just maybe, there's a slight chance that you might actually collect on that judgment. That's the only reason we're left here. And I guess this law is going to leave us with even less of this. I guess the purpose of this law is to prevent people from losing their homes. Don't get me wrong, I've had many good tenants, but I've also had tenants who, when they leave their apartments, I am like flabbergasted and to the point of crying. These people obviously do not treat the apartments I give them as a home. It's just basically a place to rot for a period of time and to put their belongings. I walked into apartments left by people. I just recently had a tenant vow on me without paying the last month's rent, so I don't even have the money to cover the last month's rent. Didn't even notice, so it wasn't another month's rent. The year before he moved in here, I completely renovated this apartment, new carpet, new all-new sheet rock, new stove, new refrigerator, great cabinets. There were holes throughout the apartment, in the ceiling, the faceboard kicked in, what a big slit on the bottom floor. Apartments don't leave out of this vacuum once, I mean, you get the idea.
Thank you so much. Time's up.
Is my three minutes up?
Yes, it is. Thank you. That being said, that closes tonight's public comment period. Who can we sign up online to speak?
There are several speakers still left.
There are several speakers still left. There's not much time left. We need to get out of the public comment, to everybody.
So, we'll have to be here later. Comments in the debate, comments in the committee, in the council, a couple of comment periods before this time for our votes. So, we've got, we're a minute, so we're just going to.
Point of information.
Yes.
There are people speaking at the end of.
No, it's in an hour. Sorry, it's going to be an hour session, 30 minutes in, 30 minutes. I think we've got, we've already been an hour of public comment.
There's a recent theory of the United States. Why are you?
acquired to...
So we need to get the word out. Quiet this chamber for a second. Let's do it. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've also, uh, moved into my eight, number one, unit.
Second. Second. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Vote and through. We can allow, I don't mean that we want to defer our council members. We can allow the remaining staff and going to the maintenance portion, but at best time, we can allow whoever is a pastor to listen.
Could be on top.
Pardon me?
Could be on top.
Yeah, could be on top, yeah. So a little, uh, taking on to our agenda. Consideration of local laws. Let's do that.
Thank you. I advise you, local law F, um, has to be...
Introductions are...
Mr. President.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kimbrough. All right, my future adjutant, Mr. Kimbrough.
Thank you, Mr. President. And we're going to, number one, not thirty seconds.
Thank you. Uh, same as that. Let's try and make all in favor.
Aye.
We can pass. I'm like, I want to vote for it. He was asked that, oh, thank you. Uh, I want to ask that, uh, to the reading and to Local Law F, 2021.
Can the board agree to the Local Law?
The Local Law, and then these are our two courts, illegal procedures of Chapter 30, courts illegal procedures, the Code of the City of Albany, in relation to eviction proceedings.
Mr. Kimbrough. Excuse me. Last one, please, Local Law P.
Oh, oh, yeah, uh, first of all, I'm, uh, a few people, pardon me. Point four. We're reporting on the Local Law F at this point, right? For this, oh.
We're calling it Local Law F.
All right.
Yes.
We're going to Local Law F and...
Madam, madam. We didn't know you said, you're going to do a Local Law P. Yes. He didn't know if it's okay if I do a Local Law P.
And how would we announce you in Local Law F?
So, let's do it one more time. Again, here. I'd like to do the Local Law F, which we need and...
Can the board agree to the Local Law?
See what I just said? Local Law.
A Local Law that makes parties courts illegal procedures of Chapter 30, courts illegal procedures of the Code of the City of Albany in relation to eviction proceedings.
In discussion on this thing. Mr. O.
Mr. President, I'd like to make an amendment to Local Law F and include the provisions in Local Law P into the Local Law F. That's the first one. Thank you. And then the second one.
Is there a second on the floor?
Second.
You have a second. All in favor?
Well, can you grant your...
I have a little one. I'm very excited.
Uh, I'm afraid, I thought that the sponsor of the bill would be first opportunity to make comments, on the bill. And then, a lot of times, we may buy myself a hobby. And then, and then...
The chair, the chair of the...
That's a little...
Chair is recognized as a colleague of the senator. We have a second on the floor. We need to moderate all in favor of the amendment, uh, this only amendment.
Can we have this back here?
Does all of your witness play your amendment?
Sure. Councilmembers, fellow councilmembers. I want to see this more than other. But I'm very concerned about the language in the law currently in F. That there's problems, that this is being brought to court, we can have a deal with. Now, I've heard that we got Local Law P to correct some of these issues and amendments add to it because there's a realization that Local Law F has some problems. And this reminds me of the USDL, which we're still dealing with today, over four years later, trying to correct the problems of something that was rushed through. I'm asking that my fellow members, let's get this right. Let's go for it. It makes me even more, I, I can do my words, I would love to ask for this. But I can't go consciously on something that is not correct. You know, I, I heard the term that there's technical problems. I would not get on an airplane that has technical problems. And I'm at a distance to jump, I fly from the United States to Silicon Valley, for a job. We had a plane vibrating in a couple, just don't worry about it. We managed to move around the problem. I worry about data legislation. I think the court's legislation is good. I think it's important that we protect our tenants in the city. And I also think it's important that we protect the landlords in the city. We work together to make this a better place. And all I'm asking is, can we just correct this? Waiting to do, you know, Local Law P, correct, and it's just going to be very, I put out in the court, perhaps the mayor doesn't like it, he knows. You know, I can't. I guess you look at it, look into your heart, all night. If the mayor of this legislation says that there's a problem, we're fixing next one. I should do it right now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, my family has been life's moral branches. I stood up in this chamber and I spoke about the experience that my brother had a couple of years ago, when his rent, his rent was raised $300 without any improvements being made to his apartment. I stand before you as an elected official, and I'm experiencing the same thing currently with the same landlord. Who knows that this legislation, if he knew that something was coming, just what, what he did is he started, um, asking the people to sign new leases, which real high rent increase, monthly increases. It's a forced eviction. He wants to, um, move me out of my apartment so he can make another Airbnb in our building, because that's another issue that we're dealing with. People being forced to move out and then apartments go into Airbnbs. I looked at some of the landlords that came up here and spoke in favor or against. And, and, and I could, I could see that you probably are good landlords. But this isn't about good landlords. This is about people who, um, make people wake up at night, in the middle of the night, because they remember what was said to them about their housing. This is about people who have to live with some hard, um, some hard conditions because if you say anything about it, you're getting, you're getting told to, um, get out. And, you know, like, we've been living in, um, we were living in this place and this guy bought the, um, building. And for five years, you know, it was, it was pretty consistent, you know, he, he wasn't doing a lot. And then all of a sudden, you start hearing words like market rate, square footage. And I had to tell him that the other side of the market rate is market service. So when the gentleman just spoke about having water go down in his apartment, I experienced that every single day. And I'm told, I heard him tell the super of our building that I had to, the super had, I mean, the super had to wait to go into, into the guest checkout. So personally...
I need to first of all, your remarks have to be tailored to the specific parts, portion of this section.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll hold on to that. Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, the amendment portion?
Well, my, looking for base to our council. Uh, since originally, when we were head of the ordinance, we tried to pull that together. At one point, I realized this is better than making that first together. So I can advertise that to the Congress. So I guess to appreciate the opinion of the council. Should we basically get Local Law P and Local Law F combined together? Is it an appropriate way for the county to shepherd it? Or is it more appropriate to maintain it together or seeking a regular meeting to have this?
Um, there is not really a legal method. The original proposed way was to do a separate local law, which is appropriate as well. However, we should have to make a second amendment, a hostile amendment to Local Law F, which will include the amendments to Local Law P, which is Local Law F. However, if the amendment does, if the hostile amendment does pass, the Local Law F cannot be pulled out tonight as it is now an amendment and now must be made.
So do you have a feeling that...
That is, I have no feeling, either on that is, or gets whatever the council decides.
I guess we'll should go for it. You know, Mr. Galloway.
Thank you. Um... We have spent a lot of time on this bill. We have spent over three minutes and additional counseling on this bill. We've had several meetings on this bill. We've made several amendments, several amendments to the worst concerns that come from both sides of the aisle on this bill. In addition, the additional amendments that have been passed have lasted eight. And I've spent, I've spent that, those amendments. And I expect that in that conversation, which is why I have the action of Local Law P. So that we can still have that conversation, while making sure that the core of the bill is moved forward. Because the core of the bill is not the motion. And I made that very clear. I'm open to have a conversation about end language to make sure we address concerns that come from landlords and concerns that come from tenants, while you're not open to end language that dilutes the focus of the bill. So I ask that the council take a vote now to not move forward with the hostile amendment and allow Local Law F come through for a vote. Thank you.
Can the board put its whole vote on... I couldn't, that's why I have to take it for it. This is going to go right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of surprise, this is the House file, hostile amendment, because exactly, exactly the language that the sponsor has suggested that this Local Law F is passed for the understanding that the Local Law P language will be added at some point. The amendments that were made at the last meeting were predominantly amendments to address the sponsor's concerns. Once I had a meeting with him, Corporate District Council, and Mr. Clancy, and was able to clarify that some of the things that he was saying in support of the legislation regarding landlords having incentive to enter into a lease were not quite accurate, um, because nothing in the legislation required a tenant to enter into a lease agreement. We had been having discussions since the beginning about the need to provide some clarification with regard to, um, a landlord being able to establish his reasonable rules and regulations. Some language was also added to address that. But what then happened is what's been happening with this legislation since the start. And that is, it's confusing. It lacks clarity. And one of the things that, as I'm struggling with this, um, and I support the whole concept of good cause eviction, um, people can be able to establish their own, put down roots, especially in work for our kids. But we should get it clear. We should get the language clear and easy for everybody to understand because it's not going to be our administration or this council or the advocates who are going to be interpreting this. This is going to be day-to-day language that will be looked at and interpreted by tenants, by landlords, by lawyers, and by the court. From the very first time I saw this legislation, I, as a lawyer, was having difficulty understanding it. Uh, the fact that the sponsor just recently understood that the language to say what he thought of it is reflective of how confusing the language has been in this legislation. I'm lucky enough to have lived with a attorney who has a lot of experience in the landlord tenant matters. Um, was a former judge in Houston Court. And when I was having difficulty understanding things and I was showing the language, he was also having difficulty with it. We need to clean it up. We need to clean up the language and get it right before we adopt this legislation and turn it over to other people then to figure it out. Um, that has been my great reservation with this process that has been proposed. I suggested an amendment. Some of those, most of those letters changed since receptive, that the critical things were not so good. Um, let's get the legislation amended so that when people, um, want to, um, you know, are looking at this legislation, they understand what it means. One of the things I suggest potentially, if we're looking to have everything taken back at the same time, is currently a ninety-day effective date in this. We can change that to seven Fridays. Adopt amended version and the next council, if you have the same effect only, you have clarity. Hopefully clarity. This doesn't, but it's a lot clearer with, I think, with regard to what I suggested, a little add. The one council member shared this with a very regarded, well, um, well-known landlord in the city. The last version we're looking at now is up. And this all, we've forgotten, you know, we are, um, we're being asked to forget the board this amendment he made. He looked at it and he said, "Uh, I can't understand it." So we need to, I, I, I think it's very important for that, making amendment, change the effective date, um, also by seven Fridays before, uh, before the end day. And then we can, um, move over to that to review together.
Mr. White.
First of all, I have to remember, Paul has come to, uh, maybe one last time to discuss this legislation. And, uh, that... this legislation, and, uh, that, uh, has a, as Shane said, a lot of the concerns was in the law issues, law, and language issues. I agree with you, and I'm now speaking of a bunch of attorneys and network of associations that see a lot of concern. I, uh, I think it should be amended and moved forward.
Any further discussion and submitted questions? Mr. Bowden?
Uh, please, uh, please.
Is somebody that I can sit over here? I'm sorry. Mr. Opie, in the same room, did you have the hand?
No, I'm on it.
Yeah, I have switches, uh, her lawn. Mr. Posey, maybe he does have words for the last. But let me just talk, take a minute. So I, you know, uh, I use local law.
Do you have your hand on the screen?
Uh, it went off. I will admit the acoustics in this room are horrible. So I support local law P. I don't support adopting it tonight, uh, because it will slow down the process. The idea of packaging some amendments and corrections in local law P is a separate message to local law F, it's not a common, uh, type of legislature, uh, but it's a way of making corrections, uh, to address otherwise moving forward. So if there is soundness, local law was developed in cooperation and with support of the local market, so it was flat agreement from the constellations. So if, what I'm hearing from members that this local law P addresses concerns, uh, whether or not it's adopted tonight as an amendment to local law F, in which case local law F has its weight, and if one quarter is adopted at the next meeting, it's the same thing. So I would suggest that we have to move forward into the local law F tonight, uh, and hear local law P, so action, and, uh, as we're shooting. And while these college weeks that people want or feel should be including local law P, that I'll just go after it, uh, but I appreciate, you know, uh, concerns, but I just don't support, uh, the amendment to adopt the local law P and the amendment to local law F tonight.
Thank you. Can the clerk please hold the roll? No, I can't break it.
Are you voting? Can you make it clear that you're voting?
We're voting on an amendment to the local law F. The majority of the bond has to vote yes or no to that local law. It's not going to be one to the local law.
We're voting no, we can vote on local law F.
So can the clerk please read the call roll?
Councilmember None?
No.
Councilmember Bowden?
No.
Councilmember Nancy?
No.
Councilmember Shek?
Yes.
Councilmember Deey?
No.
Councilmember Pearl?
No.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Frederick?
No.
Councilmember Ollie?
Yes.
Councilmember Ivey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Kimber?
No.
Councilmember Love?
No.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Five minutes remaining, nine minutes.
Minimum available. Moving on to local law F, this will...
Now... Thank you. First and foremost, I want to just thank, and actually thank everybody who's pushing for the, um, the real, real performance, and it has not been as smooth as it wants to be all night today. But I appreciate that, that individuals on both sides of the aisle have given their time for the present, the issue, and I appreciate the time and the energy that is, from my colleagues, that have also put in time and effort, as well as, uh, Lord Tom and everybody else that have been thought of, trying to get this, but I appreciate it, I really do. I want to first tell all the misinformation that has been put out throughout the conference. First, I want to name two...
Mr. Bowden, please read the local law.
Oh, I didn't get into that. Oh, I, I introduced local law F as twenty twenty-one. And that, that amendment has been passed.
Thank you, sir. If the, uh, if the clerk can read the local law.
Local law, and then our two parts of the local seaters, and very important seaters, and all of the city of Albany officials who do not issue those.
Now, Mr. Bowden, continue.
Okay, so, um, some of this information. One, this is not binding. When they have made it clear, the goal of being set up, say, that X amount will be more than equal. The five percent increase is only for when you will be giving a lease. That is it. And we made it clear, why is that there? It's there to make sure landlords don't get along with the law by increasing the rent to a non-reasonable amount. In that, that explanation, there was still opportunity for more than five percent increase if improvement is not being made to that given. So the fact is not binding. If you have a vacant building, if you have a vacant unit, no one's telling you what you've been running for. No one's telling you that you can't want it for more than what you've been running for before. What we are telling you is you can't use it as a weapon to move people out. That's what's wrong with it. And that's what happened. That was a problem. There are ten ways, there are ten clauses to remove a tenant. We have not had time to attack bad tenants by no means. If there's bad tenants, that means they're bad neighbors. That means they're friendly town neighbors or we live with them. We want landlords to be accountable for their tenants. It is no longer just, this is passing the income, and I'm not responsible for who I put in your neighbor's. You are responsible for who you brought to your neighbor's. You are responsible to make sure they are, to ensure they're good to the neighbors, and they does not. There are plenty of conditions here to be able to remove those bad actors. No one here is trying to say bad actors in our neighborhood. Uh, that is unconstitutional. This is the argument that I really wish people would stop making, because it makes it look like we have not evolved over the last fifty-two years. That is a safe argument they used in nineteen sixty-eight when we were passing the third thousand act. It's a fair argument that makes all landlords look like we have had that until we've evolved. So let's start with it. It's not binding. In addition... What is it doing? That was the question. What is the purpose of this? Very true. The purpose is to eliminate the loophole of non-renewal. Let me give you an example of how that works. I went to Steve. Steve had no lease. Why did he have no lease? Because if Steve doesn't have a lease, I don't have to give him a great notice of eviction. Steve called me because there's a legal boundary. I don't call. Steve called me again, I don't call. Steve called me again, I don't call. Steve called home. Called coming, fine. Or Steve, I'm not a new release, I'm with it. That's what happened. That's how. We just had a pack of house bills to try to address the issue. But we don't trust the fear tenants have to be able to bring those issues to the forefront and achieve nothing. That's what this bill does. That's what it does. So we're here, back to those conversations, let's have it. I'm a landlord, I am a member of G-Park, so I can tell you, one of the members of G-Park does not support, uh, does support this bill, and I understand the difficulties that members have done, I get it, and I understand the investment that they make and put in. But if you're doing it as invited, if you have a clear lease, where you're putting out actual, actual lease to the guidelines, or you're not paying tenants, this isn't going to work so well. If you take advantage of the non-lease absence, because you, you take advantage of the ninety day or thirty day, depending on how, depending on whether they have a lease, absence to remove, then yeah, you didn't have to step up the game. You won't. And that's not bad, because it actually benefits all of us. It benefits all of us more and more. If you're taking care of your property, but the person next door is not, and they explore for you, right? They explore for you, keep your tenants, and it's low with your property. So by holding everybody accountable for how they treat their property and how they treat their tenants, it actually benefits all of us. So I'm asking, I'm asking this to them, I'm asking that you move forward in, and I appreciate the time, consideration, and the energy that is spent by some entity to move this forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Knapp?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I thought again, I also want to thank, uh, all the hard work that was, uh, made to, uh, see this legislation, and also for the advocacy groups who have been in the trenches for us for years, uh, I want to thank, uh, the people, also for all his help, uh, with the state of the council, and all the council members who came up with, not the limit is to see this bill that we're about to roll today. I want to begin by saying housing is a human right. This bill prefers that tenants have a right, that tenants can reasonably expect to live in a place that's well-maintained, that tenants already priced out of their apartments because of arbitration and also unexpected rent increases. Now, I know there's people who are concerned about the effects of this legislation, particularly on small businesses, small landlords. The truth of the matter is, if you are ready to take care of your property, make it timely repairs, and manage it properly, well, this legislation will not have a impact on your home. Let me be clear, this is not rent control. If anything, it will give the small landlords a framework to convict tenants who are not following the rules. A large portion of our city residents rent for apartments, we need to make sure that they are protected, and that this legislation when passed will do exactly that. I urge my colleagues to come on board and support this legislation, because what this legislation is going to affirm, the right of city renters to live in good quality housing. Mr. President, the city of Albany has ninety-nine boroughs, and good laws is not one of them. At the end of the day, we have to make sure that we, as a council, pass the legislation that will truly support the people. I know since being on this council, whenever we think about change, there are some people that think it's the book here. It is not. Change may be scary at first, but it is getting a benefit for the people that we need to move swiftly. I urge my colleagues to support this legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not going to repeat what I've already stated, but I just want to fix it up. Um, my brother's rent was raised three hundred dollars, and at the time, him and my mother were living together because she's on the fixed income. The next year, my brother asked for his walls to be painted, and he was then again told that his rent was going up three hundred dollars. So we're talking about somebody who was paying seven hundred and fifty dollars, now possibly paying thirteen hundred and fifty dollars without anything new being done to his apartment. So in the daytime, I'm a homeschooler here, one of my, um, primary, primary focuses is attendance. The housing, um, situation in the inner city of Albany contributes to attendance because people are constantly moving. They're going to different schools, and we wonder why some of our schools are receiving the, um, the grades that they are. So it's funny that I would say schools, because I can remember ten years ago, um, they, they started judging schools, schools started getting report cards, and you know what? Teachers were nervous left and right, just like some of the landlords are. But one of the things, the vote of confidence that I gave them is, if you're a good teacher, you don't have to worry about anything. And I think the same thing along with this, uh, resolution is, is if you're a good, if you're a good landlord, it's nothing, you don't have anything to worry about. It's the people, you saying it's not true, but if you come down and seek a work deal, that's no problem, but if, if the people, the people couldn't know what we're experiencing on a day-to-day basis in terms of, um, rents going up, in terms of attitudes being shown when people, um, voice their displeasure about things that are supposed to be right in your, um, apartment. If your AC, um, breaks down, you shouldn't be told AC is not an incessant. When, if you look in the advertisement, they're advertising central AC. If, if, um, if, if, um, tenants are constantly losing, um, things in the building and you are pushing the price up, that's not equal, that's not fair. And I'm just saying that it has to be something for, uh, protection for the people who are, are, are having to live under these, um, situations day to day, because, you know, it's hard to think about life, uh, a month in advance, sometimes a week in advance, when you're dealing with the strain of someone's attitude towards your concerns that you're entitled to. So, um, I, I have to support this legis, legislation. I have to speak up for the many people that have been affected for so long, who don't feel like they have a voice, who end up in, um, in, in, uh, in court without proper representation, who are fighting against paid orders. It's not fair, and that's the reason why we have to come up, and that's the reason why it's a need, and that's the reason why people are, are, are waiting for some type of support. So I ask all my colleagues to support this tonight because it's not right, what's been going on for too long, and, you know, people don't have the same, uh, opportunities as others as far as to be able to pick up and move their stuff and find adequate, um, houses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Opie? Anyone else? I don't know if it's... Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So it was about four months ago, uh, that we held a press, press conference hotel, I think over the buildings department, uh, my name is Johnson, who announced the package of the four bills, uh, which, this is another source of, uh, it's been here for a while. But from this, I feel, I've come to my position on, and on this proposal, uh, at your careful consideration, uh, in part of that process, I can listen to all perspectives, uh, and actually sort out those perspectives, uh, within my constituency, uh, from different sides. We don't know if you agree, but I can listen to everyone, uh, to get their sense in terms of concerns, uh, provisions that they might have. I also consider my own experience as a, as a record official, uh, in dealing with constituent issues over the years, and in dealing with issues that do relate to quality of housing, uh, and tenant issue, tenant landlord issues. So I think we've all, the council, I mean, you've all dealt with those issues, uh, to some extent or the other, uh, as a tenant of nature of the, uh, the order that we recommend. Part four bill package of local laws, uh, that were announced back in March, um, they are all in some way related, and to some extent, we really can't separate them. There is, there is a common thread of relationship, uh, complement, you might say, to each other. The previous local laws that we passed, we passed three of the four local laws in that package so far. Those dealt with co-enforcement, uh, with the, with our building department to address issues. to address issues, uh, in terms of housing, code violations, quality of housing activity. Uh, we also provided that, uh, to the posting of information on, um, apartment bill, limited apartment buildings, uh, related to, uh, doing the form of contact, uh, the copies of the ROP, uh, and also contact information for tenant advocacy organizations that tenants would contact and, and they had issues, uh, for their rights. In all of that, um, good cause is really the lynchpin that makes those privileges work. Um, because it gives tenants the right to exercise their rights without fear of retaliation. And I think that's really what this local law is about. Um, I, I'm not, I, I'm not interested in denigrating landlords. Uh, I don't, I, I have really good, I have plenty of, I have good relationships with landlords. Um, I understand there are probably tenants out there. I've dealt with probably tenants that have a real attack on quality of life in the neighborhood. Um, but this is not about making things more difficult, but it is assuring that the ability to have stable, useful housing exists and that the tenant has the ability to exercise, exercise their right to that type of housing without the fear of retaliation. Um, all things being equal, a good relationship is where a tenant is going to a landlord and have relationships addressed. And that's the way it should go. Uh, but also if that can happen and the tenant needs contact, uh, code department, uh, the possible issues related to, uh, quality of, of housing, issues that are not, that are not due to air effects, et cetera. Uh, the nation has the right to do that without the fear of retaliation. We've had a lot of discussions with that issue of lease renewal in many areas, and I have raised those. I understand the importance of lease renewal. Uh, when we hear that most evictions are related to the failure to pay rent, I'm wondering in terms of the decision to not renew a lease, is that the same level? Or is sometimes the lease renewal, decision not to renew a lease, related to, uh, dealing with tenants that may complain too much or may give nuisance or et cetera? Um, I, I don't know. I mean, I know the lease renewal issue is a catched issue. Uh, and to some extent, if you choose renewal, decision not to renew a lease, can be a loophole, uh, in the back four, uh, to deal with the tenants that might, might be, uh, complaining about the traffic issues or don't, et cetera. Uh, and that's one area that I think we need a little more clarification on. Local law can deal with some of that, like more clarification for tenants. Uh, but I understand the importance of rapid lease renewals if you miss local laws as well. Um, but in the end, what we really need is to work on, uh, you know, building the store, tenant landlord relationship. Uh, hopefully, that's the best way things are going to work without the need to, uh, the specific departments to resolve issues that can, other than, uh, or going towards, and hope maybe to some extent, uh, could cause to help, uh, build similar relationship. Um, I don't think this is contrary to, to the state law of the passage of nineteen eighty. Uh, I think bill is on it. Um, and adds some more specific standards that relate to eviction and standard reasons for eviction. Uh, but also, I think, regards to the tenant rights, uh, in terms of their ability to exercise their right to, to, uh, to, you know, redress the issues that might relate to the animals that are in the yard. The rental accommodation may add up. So I would be moving this on tonight. Um, I do support local law cases as well, as I indicated earlier. Um, and I think if we move forward, uh, I did, you know, indicate in accordance of the design effective date that we have. Uh, I think that we really move forward, as we do in some other cities, uh, where they have put together good hearing in terms of clear language explanation, hopefully, tenants and landlords will help to understand how these procedures and provisions work. But that's something that I think we really have to have a place to dwell and we need to be able to do this in a nation. Um, I do think this, uh, need to be done at a statewide level as well. Um, I know that all may be adopted tonight. I believe you probably are the first in the state. The other cities, the localities are, you know, gearing up to do that as well. Hopefully, our action tonight will provide, with action taken by other localities in the state, will help build meteors for statewide laws that can be enacted in Mexico State session. Uh, I think, uh, having statewide standards are important to provide clear, equal playing fields throughout the state rather than having a patchwork of certain laws. But I think our action tonight will contribute to moving in that direction. So I would be in favor of, uh, moving on.
Then, Mr. Nunn, go right on.
Okay, uh, I'm, I'm a few. And it's definitely not unconstitutional, and I agree with how Frank Lee said that all time. Uh, it did work unconstitutional when the laws, two thousand nineteen, House of Representatives Act, it was not gathered. And it ended up. And as Alfredo said, uh, that was a talker back in fifteen sixty, and so right now, it's, it's already a century now. It's very rare. The Constitution never said that contract, uh, was supposed to be a problem. However, I do have concerns. I agree with lots of legislators in terms of the Congress. And I commend our, for great work between John and, and our, our folks. Very, very deep. My concern is, you know, I, I read the material that Senator Jackson sent to us. Uh, and we agree with him. And it seems to me that the main point that they are trying to make is the state has to pass a protocol. Which I think is actually true. And I don't think it would be a priority action that if you wind up in the, the House of Representatives Act, two thousand nineteen, which appears to be deliberate because it's true, we were on that time. And as the material that Senator Jackson sent to us, uh, encouraging everybody to support the, except for thirty-two, thirty-three, which would provide that missing delay to, if you have a, a legal law. Um, what I know a little uncomfortable is, you know, I would go for a resolution asking the passion of those who spend a, some of your time in, in our country. I spent approximately eight years volunteering our time with the lady that is this and better, and a big part of that was in, uh, microcredit. And every single one of those that was connected to that, with only terrorists, less than a county, the sole law that you offered was a New York state, a real property law, and a New York state, a real property action, a competing law. No other law, no other law was ever studied. So I would read into that, that state intended certain amount of protection in the whole landlord tenant process. Um, and we're familiar with that. I mean, not, we can't enter the streets. We, we own, pay for, they, they, they built. We can't say that we've got it in a park, and we have to start to get the door. We get permission to do that. It's such a case of protection. We can't go major, uh, dig and link in park, our parks, we pay for, we pay at the park. We can't do that without state protection. So that's what's holding me here about this. Uh, and to me, it's right in the materials that, um, Senator Jackson said to us, that they're urging local governments to take action on this to basically persuade the state to do our own thing. Now, that's helping me with strategy. However, if it's done as a leverage that we may not have the jurisdiction to, widely, uh, then we may be found without it because we may wind up with arguments that are being played fair. And that, I think, would be very important, I think, with the basic term of ownership around. And that's one of the reasons why I have concern that we're passing this with a mandatory file. Uh, I kind of agree with, uh, the council's argument that we should put together a stronger statement that would be possible to quote now. Um, every, you know, everybody, I, I agree with some of that. I wrote down some comments in the Star Race. I'm not saying that, um, this is true for even more where I sit than all of you. Someone said that, uh, period of death. Um, and I certainly, uh, you know, for the fact that everybody has a right to have a home, but you live, speaking about the, uh, rules that people, uh, hold in their head. Uh, and as we're before that, that's why we asked the advocate, uh, for all year, the testing power of our codes department to grant codes currently to pay. Um, and the two thousand nineteen law was a big step forward. I can only guess why the legislature deliberately didn't take that step. I do, I don't, I think we could push them to do that. But I have my concerns about, uh, whether our, our local law will withstand the challenge of state protection. I've spent all my time with volunteering and, uh, with that action, to fix the, 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 the whole law that is covered use in the state. And I don't think it's a test of action, it's a test of, of protection. So those are my concerns, but that, I appreciate well worked and it's done, and it's not debate, and it's putting us through. But I do have some concerns whether this is going to ultimately succeed. I hope to get the state in there to do this.
Thank you. Good afternoon, and good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All my colleagues, uh, I'm glad you were here. I'm glad you were here, and I'm glad you were here. So I'm glad, thank you for your time on this. Uh, I'm glad you're here, and I'm glad you're asking yourself, get this done, uh, I think. So, I just want to remember, sixty percent of our residents, of our, sixty percent of our neighbors, of our residents, they deserve, uh, stable housing. They deserve to have the right to live in the worst cities without the fear of not getting their lease renewed. They deserve that. To my landlord, our landlord, of about fifteen years, I'm father, my aunt. And I understand the work that you have to go through there. And I understand the frustration that you feel when you do what you can't fight. And the person next door does it. And I also understand the fear that you may have if you go to the control. But we can't let our fears and anxiety allow us to kind of fly out to when more acts are being done. If you're doing what's right, continue to do it. Continue to do what's right. But it's time that we call our tenants accountable. It's time that we call our landlord accountable. And it's time that we don't allow the status quo to continue. Because it hasn't worked. It hasn't worked. Look at our city. Look at the damage that the high residential population has had to work. And this bill allows us to freedom, to be able to actually address some of these issues, to be able to call out some of these issues without the fear of losing their home, without the fear of their families, their kids losing their homes. The best way to get my, my fellow landlords to understand our duty as someone that experienced it is imagine having a mortgage where you lost some seventy-two and thirty-eight notes. Imagine that inside. That's what our residents feel. That's what our residents have to deal with, the anxiety they have to deal with, the day they act. That's what they're in for, cold. That's what they're complaining about, the housing situation. That's what they're complaining about, their other tenants that are being disrespected today. And that does not build a harmonious neighborhood. So this, in private practice, we need to move forward is to actually address that in our city. And with that, the tenants' protections is just actually be able to grow forward in a way. So thankful, or defined, and thankful, or with energy on this. And I look forward to this being passed away. Thank you.
Thank you. Good, this is all for all.
Councilmember Nunn?
Yes, co-sponsors.
Councilmember Valerie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kelsey?
Yes.
Councilmember Shet?
Present.
Councilmember B?
Yes, co-sponsors.
Councilmember G?
Yes.
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Frederick?
Yes.
Councilmember Holly?
President.
Councilmember V?
Up.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, co-sponsors.
Councilmember K?
Yes, co-sponsors.
Councilmember L?
Yes.
Councilmember O? Nine years term, and we have heard it. Two present, three present, and one now.
Both all present.
Concerning our agenda, our local laws, uh, local law.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I noted local law in, uh, twenty twenty-one, requested, uh, reading and, you know, local laws.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Considerably changing the local law. Local law, representing chapter twenty, apartments and buildings regulatory compliance and amending chapter forty-two, departments' exemptions to enact a new part thirty-nine to title departments to regulate building and regulatory compliance.
Special moments, local laws.
Yeah, this quick one, Mr. President. Uh, this local law mainly, uh, ninety, ninety-eight percent of language actually is existing language and is moving into chapter twenty. Uh, it's in city code, chapter forty-two, which is where, uh, commissions and, uh, departments are located. Uh, it does include some clarifications, uh, from the existing language to what is in the new language, related to, sorry, qualification within the building department. This is actually a local law that is supposed to be in chapter twenty-seven. Along with USGO, uh, it's somehow, uh, lost in the process. Uh, and actually, USGO has cross references to this, uh, provision in chapter forty-two, which doesn't exist until we adopt that tonight. So this is, uh, it's maybe a, a technical correction in support of Asian, in terms of occasions. Uh, and I'd like to be, uh, open to, uh, local favor in that. Thank you.
Special moments, local law. T. Nunn, you've already called.
Councilmember Nunn?
Yes, co-sponsors.
Councilmember Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsors.
Councilmember Kelsey?
Yes.
Councilmember Shet?
Yes, co-sponsors.
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Vay?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Carroll?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Ollie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Rydell?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Love?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Right.
Fourteen and the other minute zero.
Local law passed. Continuing on our agenda, important standing committee. Mr. Kimbrough, in the same, yeah.
Yes. I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. The planning, land use, and development committee will be meeting tomorrow evening to discuss USPO, the codes, and the next, in USPO. Thank you.
And, Jim, thank you, Mr. President, for taking that. That's a great opportunity and a life opportunity to discuss local laws together again, and both for help with any and for a great start. Mr. President, the conference of the committee will like to discuss the space department and whatever, and I'd like to give you nine votes for that. Thank you. One more standing committee report, we're going to have to introduce our reporters. Ms. Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. I hold this, uh, orders twenty-one, second to twenty-one, and ask for this to be passed.
Thank you, Ms. Law. In the court, please read your orders.
In order to authorize the direct to the greater international area of amusement in the city of Albany over a portion of city full property at twenty-third front car for the installation of a judicial service logo.
Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President, for your time.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on the word as you reduce, Mr. Ollie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice ordinance twenty-two, seventy-two, twenty-one, and ask for this to be passed.
Thank you, sir. In the court, please read your orders.
In ordinance amendment chapter three seventy-five, we provide sustainable development in relations with recreational vehicles in campus and allow them to ride.
Thank you. Kimbrough?
Thank you, Mr. President, for your time.
Well, thank you, sir. And the rest of the committee, Kimbrough?
A R.
Thank you, sir. Continuing on the resolutions introduced, Ms. Law.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice that was fifty-nine, second to twenty-one, and ask for this to be passed.
Thank you, Ms. Law. In the court, please read your resolutions.
A resolution supporting the four thousand partnership and applications to the New York State Department of State for state assistance and funding shared powers to develop and execute.
Any discussion on this, President? Zina, your first call.
Councillor Nani?
Yes.
Councillor Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Nancy?
Yes.
Councillor Kasek?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Vay?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Carroll?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Frederick?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Ollie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Rydell?
Yes.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Love?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Right.
Fourteen and the other minute zero.
Resolution passed. Continuing on, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolution sixty point seven, two point twenty-one, and I ask that it be read and passed.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. In court, please read your resolution.
A resolution supporting the blue light development movement in its application to New York State Homes and Community Bureau for state assistance funded in South End grocery drive.
Any discussion on this, President? Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to keep this brief, but if you come down to the second ward, you see a bunch of dollar stores, corner stores, in the city school district, of all meaning, we've been teaching kids about healthy choices, we've been introducing them to growing their own festivals, and so about a year and a half ago, I did a town hall meeting, and it was primarily students in there, and all that they were talking about was fresh vegetables. So I told them that I was going to champion their cause, and this kind of fell right in front of my lap, so I would like to thank Blue Light and for giving me the chance to be able to go back to the kids and let them know that fresh fruit and vegetables are coming, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. For a special on the resolution, Ms. Gregor?
Thank you. I just want to thank Blue Light Development for our partnership endeavor. South End has been a huge desert for a very long time, and our residents need fresh food, fresh, affordable access to food, especially given that many might not have personal vehicles, they not have the means to travel to get such food, and it causes many, many issues and leads to further issues down the line. Kids, primarily, kids, adults are not fed and nutritionally, it is to further systemic issues down the pipe, so ultimately, thank you to Blue Light Development for our endeavor, and I see it will be a great help towards making this come to fruition. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for a special, Zina, your first call.
Councillor Nani?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Valerie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Nancy?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Kasek?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Vay?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Carroll?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Flynn?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Frederick?
Yes.
Councillor Ollie?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Rydell?
Yes, co-sponsor, please.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes.
Councillor Kimbrough?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Councillor Love?
Yes.
Councillor O'Brien?
Yes, co-sponsor.
Fourteen and the other minute zero.
Thank you. Resolution passed. Mr. Allen, your last two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I notice resolutions three, one, and two, one, one, are the last four.
Thank you. In the court, please read your resolution.
A resolution supporting the city of Albany and its application to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for state assistance and funding of broader complete street products.
Discussion on this, President. Mr. Allen?
I spoke about this in Congress, this is a area that we've all time coming, and anybody that is in your background today can support the same thing. And, um, because we get a lot of work to do in the future, so I'm absolutely thrilled that this is something that's in the heart of the neighborhood, and especially the school and the parks are right on that end of the schools, we have a pool on the side, so, um, it's, uh, it's something I really appreciate about that, and this is very important.
Thank you, Mr. President. The vote?
I just have a question. We did have the focus, there was some discussion on the numbers, and tonight I heard something say two million, but I don't think it's a big one, so do you mind doing a grant?
Um, it's, it's two million dollars, so half of that money is, is, is a grant, and there's a, like, a, a, a.
So if you're moving that as a grant?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm, I'm.
Thank you.
Mr. Rydell, does he make up? Oh, I don't know. I didn't know what was going on. No, you've heard me about this for many, many years, and you've gotten out of it already, but, uh, hey, thank you for responding to this, and it's all over with. Thank you all. Yes, it is, Mr. Rydell.
I'm Mr. O'Brien. Yes, and it's welcome to that, 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 Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, so I, I will, I usually support resolution, close sponsor of resolution, um, and, and someone who spent my, you know, early political act of career, quite often, I'll give you the rights, uh, and, uh, it's obviously something that is very important to me personally. Uh, and let's put it clearly what the issue here is. It's not, we, we are talking about the thruway authority, uh, through a rest stop, rest stop, which is public property. Um, as public officials, even though we might not have direct authority over the use of that property and it's still leading to a public authority, uh, there's still a responsibility that we have as good stewardship of the property to assure that it's used in a way, uh, that benefits the public and also, I think, is consistent with, uh, the valiums, laws, uh, of state, uh, and those values that we as a state hold. And then we have demonstrated through acting various laws, uh, regarding human rights and human rights. In this case, uh, it's a company that has had a record of supporting causes which seek to deny rights, uh, to the ocean community. So, I would have a problem, therefore, uh, entering into some type of arrangement where that organization, that company, then has a right to use public property. And I think, you know, with this remark, actually, there's a very, well, thruway stops are welcoming stops for travelers and people who come into our state. Uh, they're a source not just of, you know, rest stop, uh, hospitality, food, et cetera, but they're also a source of tourism information, um, et cetera. So, I, I think that remark will be very well, these are also not just public property, but they are welcoming sites to our state. And we send a message then by putting on public property and then the organization that has a record in supporting causes, organizations, campaigns that deny rights in certain, to certain communities, my community. Uh, so it's also very important to me, and that's why I do support this. Uh, if this was an issue of Chick-fil-A wanting to open up store on Madison Avenue or Pearl Street or Lark Street, I don't think one of them would be there. Uh, but if that was the case, it would be very different. And I would not support a resolution that sought to deny private, private organization and private ways to do something like that. So, I think it's important we make that distinction. We're talking about the use of public property. Uh, I think our responsibility between good stewardship of public property versus something that happens on private property, which is entirely different. And this resolution expresses concern with regard to use of public property. Therefore, I will go to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, uh, I'm a co-sponsor of this, this resolution. Uh, and I agree with the comments that have been made by Councilmembers Farrell, Lynn, and Conde. And, um, they, they show more than our public dollars and collect, um, values that we hold here in New York State. I wanted to add one more thing, and that has to do with, uh, city involvement with our community here. Tonight's guest of the House of Legislation, that so many people brought up the issue of human rights. And we are so proud here of our human rights organizations, all, all the effort that went into assuring people's ability to human rights. And we have to recognize that that message gets, uh, sent throughout the city. And we feel that truly are standard bearers of that, um, of that information that we're on. So, it's important that, even though Chick-fil-A may not be, uh, it's out on the third way someplace, it's important that, uh, communities like ours stand up, take a stand, uh, on these critical human rights issues. Uh, so I am very proud to support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I, I, as I listen to the concerns, um, brought forth, um, I, I guess I just, as a business, have they ever discriminated towards anyone that came into the stores? Because I, I don't think that I've ever heard, heard that. And, you know, when I first saw the, um, when I first saw the, the, um, release that Chick-fil-A was coming to the thruway, you know, the conversation was, hey, I'm getting on the thruway because everybody wants Chick-fil-A. So, I, I just think that some interesting points have been made and, and, um, you know, I sympathize with them. But I have to, I guess, be the voice of the people that were, um, looking forward to, um, Chick-fil-A coming to the area. And, and, um, I just find that it will be hard for me to support legislation. Uh, it, it will be hard for me to support a business that is discriminating against any human being, um, as a business. And, um, I just think, you know, uh, tonight, we saw, you know, people that agreed with, um, good cause of fiction on one side, and we saw, um, so we're not always being split, I think, but this, this is a, a tough one because you, you don't want people to feel, um, their rights are being questioned or discriminated against. And at the same time, um, people have, you know, people are tied to their, to their beliefs and their, um, rights. So... These guys really made this one, um, tough tonight. So, I just, I just wanted to go up further and say that. Thank you.
Ms. Renan?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you know, it was quite interesting, like, when certain members reduce resolution, use legislation, it's always, okay, well, let's put it to committee for the discussion. And that's it. Somebody's got a good drop of pen, it's going to committee, but it's too stupid. Uh, and quite frankly, this is a resolution, uh, that's, I have to consider. I really think that we need to be cognizant of the message that we send it to, uh, to corporations and businesses. And, uh, yeah, this is sixty to a hundred miles away from the city of Oregon. Uh, some parts of our city, unemployment rate is as high as twenty-two percent. People have hard time finding jobs in our city. I support the opportunity to communicate. I was the vice president of Congress Democrats, and we walked to the Capitol to pass marriage equality. Nineteen is over. Uh, but also support free speech. Individuals and businesses have the right to express views and donate to whatever cause they choose because it's protected. We, as a city, should not be telling people what business should serve should not be here solely because of their political views and contribution to a certain cause. That is not our role. That is not our role. For free speech, also for equal rights. If people know the, know the Chick-fil-A's history, they can choose to boycott their business, walk out of it. But for the only county council to get involved in this sets a very dangerous precedent for freedom of speech and expression. And honestly, when you look at the resolution, it's ironic, given the number of operations that the city, that state do best with. I mean, talk about respecting human rights. Look at Amazon, look at Starbucks. I mean, you go down the line. And also, they talk about Thomas Noah Day, you know, a couple of years ago, the police department has blacked out communities last year, and we are having trouble passing, uh, a ban on Tedgas. That is a violation of human rights. But we don't want us to expect this without putting to committee to have the public's opinion, to have other discussions about this. What annoys me also as a president is the silence when it comes to blacking out issues. They, we, we talk about changing the voting flag and what it stands for, what it represents. Let's bring the others to committee, let's have another discussion, first of all, this. Then we talk about the ban on Tedgas. Oh, let's take a bed and let's have another committee. Let's, let's not leave a bed that's being, commerce being buried, be, be, be true. Some people are not even here to make this. When it comes to blacking out issues, there is a vote committee, it's further discussion, it's further discussion, further language, spelling is wrong, and they have to be, have to be consistent. When we talk about human rights, it's all human rights. We can't let them choose which one is going to be the topic of the day. The Tedgas is being introduced for months, and now we're talking about what is the term? Sometimes it hurts what is there on Chick-fil-A, which is, yeah, like I said, sixteen, two hundred miles away. I think we have to make sure that this city, where the only businesses, you see the uptake of laws, the reason why people don't have work, there's no economic opportunity, there's no economic opportunity, uh, education opportunity in the city, and all these issues are important. You know, and, um, like I said earlier, people want jobs for, like, the Senator, old president said, to be another organization that comes in and say, you know what, I'm going to allow businesses that go into such and such to come in the city. I think we have to be really clear. There is some needle in our city that's basically had Nazi economic activity in over a hundred years. We know the Cleveland. Mr. President, you tell, uh, the Councilmember, and that's all about the job. It's, it's bad.
Yeah, probably, yes, it is. The nine, the eight, the one, the resolution, it's probably, uh, my councilmember.
Okay, sure. So, when we're talking about this resolution, I think we have to be, uh, while I wanted to go to committee for the discussion, because I think I probably need to go to the way going. Uh, there are some people who may be lined up to look for jobs with the Chick-fil-A. Uh, so again, I will be voting for president. Uh, I think my colleagues need to really be cognizant of the messages that we said. Take a look when we have unemployment in the city as high as twenty-two percent, and businesses have been, really, this city has been attracted to residents. I will be voting for president. Thank you.
Ms. Ballard, and Ms. Ballard, I will be responsible for the last, uh, question, Ms. Ballard.
Thank you. Um, I, I, I like all this respect and freedom of speech and freedom, whatever entity or business to have that freedom of speech. Um, but I, I think that would be very good discussion between this company going into a state agency versus going into Calm Santa, which is a private, would be very clear discussion. And to me, it's not about Chick-fil-A. I'm not, I'm a KFC guy, and so this is not about the Chick-fil-A. But it is about making sure we, all of our residents, where we stand in terms of the position, when it comes to state entities. And this is a population that about five, six years ago wasn't allowed to get a man in our country. Let's remember this. This population, like so many of us, is still feeling that pain. So, for us to stand with it as a city and as a, uh, government in our city, saying, we don't support that, and that we're going to stand up to the state and let them know that we don't support that, that we want to make sure that all of our residents feel welcome when they decide to die in a certain location in a state entity. So, I support this resolution. I think it's a clear difference between it being state agency, private entity. Private entity, just like other conferences have said, that's not our place. But if it's a state entity, it is our place. And yes, I, I actually know that, because I have family who's probably living in a community, and I support them. And my boycott, my own private boycott is my, I think, is very important. And I agree with all of you in the same, because this community has felt the, the, about, they felt hate, and can't forget it. And there's many other, uh, community that have been modernized than any company, uh, who say that they don't, they don't support. And I will stand here with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I would like to thank my colleagues who support this and for their understanding of the difference between public land and private land, um, and why it's important for public land and, um, public municipal dollars to support causes and human rights and religion. And I also believe that all my colleagues know, um, how dedicated I am to human rights across the city and to the rights of Black people, um, Latino, Hispanic people across the board. And I hope that in the future, we make choices to not use our own comments on legislation to seek coordination with other governments. And I hope that we can have mutual, strong respect for each other, and it's important that I cannot use opportunities to seek coordination with all human rights and human rights.
Thank you, Ms. Farrell. Thank you, Ms. Farrell. We will, we will, on the court.
Recording in progress.
Allen.
Yes, close sponsor please.
Conde.
Yes.
Dosette.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Farrell.
Yes.
Lynn.
Yes, close sponsor.
Reverend.
Yes, close sponsor please.
Ollie.
Yes, close sponsor.
Mr. Igo?
Excuse me, sir.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Kimbrough? Miss La?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The Latin American, one gentle, one refusal, one president. Resolution passed. Continue on Revolution Introductions, it's paid.
Thank you, Mr. President. I acknowledge Resolution sixty-five, seventy-two, twenty-one, R. R. S. Respect.
Thank you. In court, please read the resolution. Resolution in support of the Amendment for the People Act, as pointed in the Senate. In court, on the resolution, it's paid.
Thank you. Uh, all of you will share remember the twenty-twenty election with, where we had historic levels of voter turnout, highest over century, uh, but also unprecedented, unprecedented efforts to support the electoral process and disenfranchise voters. And they also, often based on lines have voted for all. And unfortunately, these efforts do continue. Uh, there are restrictive voting bills being introduced across the country. Uh, one number that I saw was three hundred and six, over three hundred and sixty bills in forty-seven states. These bills restrict access to the ballot, including access to mail ballots, cutting back under voting, and reducing voter registration opportunities. So, there truly is urgency for before, and the, the S one in the Senate, and I'd say the Senate, the Court of the People's Act, uh, will address that. And some of the things that it does, uh, modernize voter registration, you can have automatic voter registration, same day, online registration, uh, protect against fraud, encourages, we restore the voters, the Voting Rights Act, uh, restore voting rights for people with prior convictions, strengthen mail voting systems, institute nationwide early voting, prevent the companies from wait times on the polls, protect against deceptive practices and more. So, it's extremely important that communities such as ours stand up and stress the importance of the passage of, of this legislation. And this, this resolution does that by doing our elected senators, Schumer, and Gillibrand, to bring this, uh, legislation to a vote. May I ask for, uh, all my colleagues in court. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Renan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the right to vote is the most sacred right there is, we the people have. It's probably one of the distinguished features of our democracy, that we the people decide who wants our vote. Last year, a record of people participated in our sacred democracy. And they elected President Joe Biden. The people spoke, and under a joint vote said loud and clear that they don't want Donald Trump as our president. Now that the people voices were heard, loud and clear, you have lawmakers, particularly Republicans from all over the country, proposing laws that restrict access to the ballot box. You have states actually implementing these restrictive laws, all to make sure that we the people have a harder time of making our voices heard. This is a scenario we're in, and we have to make sure for the sake of our democracy that we stop it. It's why we must keep this fight for the passage of the People Act, to protect the right to vote that is so important to the very essence of democracy. We do not let things like fellow states that block this, enforce the legislation, be passed in Congress. With democracy on the line, we have to be willing to abolish the procedural hurdle and support S one, H one. So, again, it was passed for the People Act, even if it means for Congress to vote for filibuster. And I trust, as Senator Stewart hears it, loud and clear, I want to thank the sponsor. As African Republican, we think about voting, uh, and to see.
And to see the actions that have been taken by our Republicans from all different states is hurtful. It took a lot of years that people sacrificed for African Republicans to have a right to vote. And to see these Republicans trying to roll back our country rather than what was told. I know this might hurt when Donald Trump lost the election, and they still have Republicans coming together to figure out a plan to appeal to the masses. They want to restrict access to the vote, to vote. Everybody, thanks for supporting this. Thank you, and I'll thank his sponsor.
Pro discussion, Mr. President. See you on your floor.
Councilmember None.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilmember Ballard.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilmember Lushet.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bailey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Farrell.
Yes, that's not true.
Councilwoman Lynn.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilwoman Reddick.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilwoman Owee.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilwoman Rodrigo.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilwoman Ristro.
Yes, close enough, please.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Brien.
Yes.
14, and another person, zero in.
Thank you. Resolution passed. When you resolution, how long before the Senate? Rest of the room, I think, did it. Does anyone have anyone who called on, or we still need, else for it?
Thank you, Mr. President. I inadvertently did not co-sponsor a little lot. Can I please be added to that as a co-sponsor? And then, secondly, for those that haven't been interested in the jobs at Chick-fil-A or the thruway, I'm looking to apply to the Popeyes as being built up since 2003. Right off the order, I'm just, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Love.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of weeks ago, the Sons of Obama Hill gave me a resolution for a bio for Telemans Cleaners. And J.R. got the resolution set up, and he was going to do a street name sometime later on this year. He was told to me the other day that Armando, from the cleaners, is not doing it, but... And I just wanted to know if we leave that resolution passed and presented to him so he can smell his voices now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The board of commissioners, Mr. Dernau?
Yeah, just real quick. CTA, CTA is moving on the scooters, and tomorrow we're having a toddler, anyone that want to test it out in the front end of the car. The toddler's at the door, to the tour, yeah. I will be there, so give them a place to buy. It's for the scooters, they're going to know, I think it's a step for everyone.
We have Commissioner Deeds.
Do.
Where do you sit at, Councilman?
I'll take the gap, I'll handle it.
Thank you. We do have Commissioner Deeds.
Yes, I do. This is Farrell, as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I offer listening for public definition of Deeds and where to refer to them.
The second amendment?
Ten.
All three.
Hi.
Mr. President.
What's that?
I am going to my first.
Commissioner Deeds?
Hey, I don't even like giving people both presents, I don't like that. I think that's the seat for the other gentleman.
Councilmembers, this is one of our longest calls since we've been back in the pandemic. But we must keep in mind that one resolution, one old law that members support does not mean they don't support the original. We have to remember that always. You have to remember that we're very different sometimes, and it's okay. But we must not alienate councilmen or fellow councilmen, because they might disagree with one resolution or one old law we took forward. So we must be mindful of that in our remarks, we must be mindful of that in our fracking, our local laws, our regulations. So just be mindful of that, and it's a good job today.
So it's all supposed to be the second amendment? All taken care of.